And welcome to the Texas Talks Podcast. I'm your host, Brad Swale. Today, I have the pleasure of speaking with Dr. Audrey Young. Dr. Young was elected to the State Board of Education in November of 2020, representing parts of greater Houston and southeast Texas area, and also recently retired as the Executive Director of Student Support Services and Special Education at Nacogdoches ISD. Her career spans over 31 years in public education as a speech therapist, reading specialist, middle school administrator, district director, and executive director. Dr. Young, thank you for being here. I appreciate it.
Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, of course. It's a pleasure to speak with you. I gave a pretty, you know, whatever, brief introduction. You know, everyone in Texas is always interested in education. We all have kids. We all pay for it, so we all have a vested interest. But, you know, if you do want to expand a little bit on your background?
Sure. I interviewed someone in eighth grade as a project as to what I wanted to become when I grew up, and I interviewed the school-based speech therapist and thought she had the coolest job ever. So I decided in eighth grade that I was going to be a school-based speech therapist and went to college to become a speech therapist and worked in the school system. Started off my career as a speech therapist, working primarily in special education. And then my middle school principal asked me to come teach at his campus as an eighth-grade English Language Arts Reading and Writing teacher. And so I did, I switched over to teaching reading for six years and then moved into middle school administration and then district administration.
Okay, so you started out, I mean, that's interesting that, I mean, God, I think we probably all took some sort of assessment like that, right? Or saw it on TV of what we're, what we should do or want to be or whatever. And you actually followed through. Yeah, so being a speech therapist, I'm familiar with that. My middle son, I've talked about it on the show. He's a, he's special needs and has been going to speech therapy since he was born. And, you know, it's before having a special needs son, I didn't really understand what is, what is speech therapy? I don't get it. And then occupation, occupational therapy, what is, that's even more weird. But, you know, it's not only speaking, it's also eating and just anything to do with the mouth, right?
That is correct. And so in the 90s, when I was speech therapist in the school system, we were able to do more with students in public education than what we do now. So at that time, you could work on oral motor skills, but it has really shifted to what is most academically appropriate. How can a student access their environment in the school and be successful academically? Speech therapy and occupational therapy, physical therapy, the therapies as a team work wonders for children. And it's a huge privilege that the children in public school have the opportunity to access OTPT and speech as part of their educational system.
Yeah, so I guess, explain to me, so in the 90s, you were allowed to do more. But now, if I'm not mistaken, if I understood correctly, you're saying that now it's only pertains to, does it apply to them succeeding in their academic setting? So for instance, my son does do speech therapy at school. And I think it's, I think all that they do is really just the iPad with the, you know, different words and stuff like that. And I think, I don't know if it's touch, I think it might be C. I don't know if they do anything with feeding. I don't think so. Maybe not.
Probably in private therapy.
Yes, definitely in private therapy.
There's a lot that you can do in private therapy. But the education realm has a set of standards by which you have to function. And so within that, over the, over 30 years plus, things have shifted in education.
So what's the state of special education now in Texas? I know about it through my own personal experience through my son. But, you know, I went through the public school system here in Texas. It seems dramatically different than it was, like you said. I mean, I went, I was in elementary school in the 90s. It seems pretty dramatically different. But then again, I was a kid and I don't know what they were doing in the special education classroom. I also don't know what they were doing because they weren't in my classroom. And that's different now.
That is different now. Students in Texas in special education, of course, it varies across the entire state, what that looks like in every school district, right? And so the state of Texas has worked diligently over the last 10 years and particularly the last five years to really ensure that teachers and directors are trained to provide the supports to students that they need to provide. With that, in this most recent legislation, funding has been allocated in House Bill 568 to increase more funds to be provided for special education services in the school system. We have also taken a turn for the better in the world of dyslexia. In 20, the State Board of Education oversees a dyslexia handbook. And in 2022, the dyslexia handbook was rewritten to align it with IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And that was the first of a couple of shifts over the last couple of legislative sessions of moving dyslexia under special education. So prior to that, students were being served in the general, under the general education umbrella, but they were being under identified. And so now that the shift has happened, students who have dyslexia are being identified and served under the special education umbrella. And so we're seeing more funding and more efforts put toward ensuring that students who have dyslexia receive the services.
Yeah, I think that's great. I know, you know, I think some, you know, friends and acquaintances, their kids have dyslexia. And, you know, are there levels to dyslexia? Can you be more or less dyslexic or is it you are or aren't?
You, you are, aren't, however, every, every child is unique.
Well, yes, of course. I don't know if there were official classifications of like, I don't know, level five dyslexia versus level, you know, I don't know. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're all human.
Yes. Well, you know, I, okay, so the, that's good. And, you know, the struggles that they, they experience and it's, you know, again, just highlighting the difference between what it was like when I grew up and what it is now. You know, I don't, I don't know that at that time, people would have thought, yes, dyslexia, dyslexia requires special focus, special needs, special education in a sense. But, you know, I think people often think of special education as, you know, I'm trying not to use my son as a personal example because his, his condition is so rare, no one's going to know what it is. But maybe like Down syndrome, right? Where there's learning delays and, you know, all sorts. There's other problems that would be other challenges, challenges, let's just say. And so that's, that's good that dyslexia is, you know, getting the attention it needs. You mentioned that across the state, the different school districts may address special education differently. How does that play out? I mean, there's certainly at the state level, minimum standards, correct?
Right. And at the federal level as well. And so across the state, we, every school district has the same rules and regulations and policies to, to follow. However, their procedures within that, how the school district rolls out their services and offers them to their community is locally designed. And so some school districts really pour into their special needs students. They see the need for it. They ensure that the funding is available. They support their district teams as well as their special education teachers and really take pride in how they're providing services to students. We have some districts that, that don't necessarily see special education students the same way. And so we do have superintendents that recently have utilized special education services as an excuse for the, their financial burdens on their school districts. And the reason why that they're asking for tax relief and addition, additional taxes or VADER taxes for their school districts, when in, when in fact, special education and CTE, Career and Technical Education are the two programs that actually bring in the most funds to the district and are self-supporting.
Yeah. How is it self-supporting?
Self-supporting in the sense that not only do the students draw in their average daily rate, like all the other Gen Ed kids, but they also draw additional funds to help provide for their services, the additional services. And then there are recapture funds in that we have Medicaid reimbursement. A lot of the school districts engage in Medicaid reimbursement. So that's millions of, millions of dollars across the state that are, is drawn back in to school districts from Medicaid reimbursement. And that funding actually goes back into the general fund. It doesn't go straight back to special education. Some school districts earmark it and provide it back to special education, but not everyone does.
So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want you to call, you know, name names or, you know, cause a ruckus or anything like that. But, you know, some districts don't look at special education the same way. You, some districts pour into it. I think that my son's probably in one of those districts. He's in the Eames District here in Austin and fantastic, love the program. If his teacher's listening to this, she's awesome. I hope she hears that. So.
Well, and that's, that's a compliment to your school board as well.
Sure. Yes, of course. It's a compliment to the whole, to the whole system there at that, at that school and district. So, but other districts, you know, they don't see it the same way. What does that mean? And what can we, what can the state of Texas do about it, if anything?
If I, if I could be granted one wish, it is that every superintendent in the state of Texas has to have taught special education for at least a year. And we have some superintendents who are parents like yourself, who have a child with special needs. And they understand it because it's here. It's in their heart. It hits home. They understand it. But we have other superintendents who've never even walked into a special education classroom. And that's unfortunate because that's a huge part of their community. You're, you're talking about nearly 20% of your student population in every school district has a level of identification of special needs. The superintendent should be incredibly familiar with their special needs students and their, and their programming. If we had more superintendents that were as in tune to their special education as they are to their athletics, we would have success rate all across the state. If we made special education a UIL sport, we would be succeeding.
Yes, the, I, Friday Night Lights would look a little bit different, for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's interesting. I guess it sounds like maybe there's an issue with understanding, an issue with experience. And, you know, I, I'm not going to go so far as to say there's malice involved, but just there, the priority is a little bit off. You know, I don't, I don't know if maybe, I'm not trying to pick on rural schools by any stretch, but, you know, it is the, there is Friday Night Lights. It's a big community thing, the football field. And maybe that brings in some extra revenue or something like that. And so that just gets a lot of attention where the special needs doesn't do that sort of stuff. But maybe I'm mistaken.
So I'm going to push back on rural schools. I would say that rural schools are probably the one community where students with special needs are most well-accepted.
Oh, and I don't, I'm not, like I said at the beginning, I'm not picking on them. I'm just creating a total, you know, a total fabrication, you know, just as an example.
It's actually the larger school districts mostly that I see that, that pour a lot of money into the extracurriculars. They pour a lot of money into their other programs. Like, I don't want to say it, like bilingual program, but there's specialty schools that they have or their specialty programs. Those programs don't, aren't reimbursed the difference in which the district's spending. Special education pulls those funds back in. CTE pulls those funds back in. So when the school district is spending a lot of money on other programs, who are, which are worthy programs, but they're not getting the, getting the difference back in, financial difference back in. They like to blame it on the programs that are expensive, but fail to look at the fact that there is a financial reimbursement.
So what is the, you know, every district is different. So let's pick on urban schools.
Yeah.
Pick on urban schools just a little bit. You know, yeah, they do have a lot, they do have a lot of programs to offer, you know, whether it's, I mean, again, just to make up a few that are, I think, somewhat common in urban districts from, you know, robotics to Spanish immersion to, you know, whatever debate clubs and all that sort of stuff. And all that's great, like you say. Why focus on that more? Does it give them? Does it help with like their school rating as far as, I don't know how it's, like if there's a robust debate club at, you know, whatever, George Washington High School, maybe those kids go on to more prestigious colleges? And so they focus more on that sort of stuff? Is that sort of the?
I don't believe it's part of the formula for determining whether the school is successful or not. I definitely think it's important to, to be able to uplift and support programs for students to look at different things. So like a robotics program is going to possibly lead to engineering, you know, which is going to help our community and our country as a whole, as those students explore those avenues. And that's a fun way to do that, right? It's an, it's an interest and there's a whole competition. Just huge related to those areas. My point in saying that earlier is that the transparency that superintendents provide to their community is not, it's, it's just easy to blame expensive programs.
Yeah, of course.
And my question is, why pick on the disabled kids? Why would you do that?
Yeah. Why would you do that? That is, that's an excellent question that hopefully one of them can answer. I won't try to answer it. I know that you won't either. So I got us a little off tangent. I'm just, I am just really eager to try to understand it. So thank you for entertaining my questions. So you said that 20% of students across the board in Texas are special education. That, I assume that was not the case, I don't know, 20 years ago.
That's correct. The state of Texas had this unwritten cap on how many special education students could be identified in a school district. And it was around 8%. And then the federal, federal government caught wind of that. And in 2011, they sent a letter to the state of Texas and said, no, no, no. And they gave the state of Texas till about 2017 to fix it. And they didn't. And then in 20, between 2017 and 2019, the state of Texas was fined $33 million for lack of correction of the issue. And during the legislative session, there, the, the governor requested that there be a special education funding allotment committee put together, similar to the one that was put together two legislative sessions ago. And from that, a 2020 report came out. It's on the internet, on the TEA website. It's called the Special Education Funding Allotment Committee Report. And in it, it talked all about the special education funding for the state of Texas. And in that, in chapter five, we talked about dyslexia and how it's not funded in Texas because it wasn't under IDEA. So that was a service that was being provided to students that, that had no reimbursements at all. We didn't draw any additional funding to provide a needed service. Another chapter in there talked about the funding formula that they utilize in the state of Florida, which is this tiered funding. So it's not based on placement, but it's based on service intensity. That was identified in this 2020 report. And from that, this House Senate Bill 568 was born. So a second committee was put together and they were able to draw all of that information and then make it Texas-sized to fit Texas and what we need. So they actually took a system that showed a great service to the students. And it showed a great progress over the 20 years that the state of Florida had been using it. And they tweaked it to fit Texas. And so that's what we're moving into in this next school year.
So, you know, dyslexia has been brought up a couple of times so far in this conversation. And it's brought up a lot in special education circles. I imagine that, you know, that 8% unspoken cap before, when dyslexia, it's just more common, I think, right? And so that increases the number. I mean, has the number, has, has anything else broadened that or helped that number climb to 20%? Because one in five may be a surprising number for some people to hear that we have one in five special education, special ed students in the state of Texas, probably because they don't have a special education student and probably because they grew up, you know, the same time as me or before, where, you know, the special, special education students were sort of pushed to the side and there just wasn't a lot of them. So is there, is there more like, is it, or just are we, is it a larger umbrella?
It's a larger umbrella. We are, we're doing a better job of identifying and providing services to students in the state of Texas. And so it has grown rapidly since 2020. Since the cap was removed. And, and since dyslexia has been moved from a non-special education area to a special education area as well.
It's just surprising that dyslexia being what it is. I mean, I think that you literally need special education to learn to read with dyslexia.
That is correct. You need specially designed instructions.
It's just kind of interesting that that would be.
Texas was one of the only states that didn't have it under special education.
Yeah, for sure. So can you give, I mean, so we described, you described earlier that rural schools generally do it well. They really, their, their special education programs are really good. And it's more urban schools that maybe struggle to, I don't know, give it the attention they deserve, let's say. And I don't know why I find that surprising. Not because, not looking down on rural schools, but I think of it, like I've had conversations with representatives at this exact table. You know, I think they talk about how it's difficult to attract doctors to rural hospitals as an example, because, you know, the way of life is different. The pay is maybe a little bit less. And I guess schools, do they not have that issue?
They absolutely have that issue. My comment is based on how the community wraps their arms around students with special needs. There, the students in their classes seem to be more accepting. They're, they're included in, instead of unincluded. And in rural schools, the numbers are low for students with special needs. And so you might, you know, only have one or two children in a classroom versus in a larger area, there's far more students in a classroom. Like for our rural schools, you might have 10 or 12 kids total, 14 kids total in that classroom. The bigger schools, you've got 28, 30 kids in a classroom.
Feel bad for that teacher.
Yeah, I feel bad for the teacher. However, it just, rural schools, just as a community alone, are more accepting of students who have special needs.
Interesting. I feel like, and I don't, again, I, I love rural Texas, nothing against rural Texas. I feel like that probably goes against what people have, the perception that people would have in their minds.
Are, are services difficult to, to access in a rural setting? Absolutely.
And that's probably why the school probably does so well, because it's the place where the, the services are accessed.
They, they are accessed.
Yeah, the private services may be more challenging to get. So the school has to step, has to pick up the slack.
That is correct.
Yeah. Wow, that's great. That's really cool. So we talk a lot about public schools. There's charter schools, obviously. Private schools, I don't know if the, how much the Texas Legislature has to do with private schools, just as a, a personal story. We tried to get my special needs son into a special needs private school here in Austin, and they rejected him because he was too special needs. I have no hard feelings against that school. I totally understand why they did. He was, he would have been a very, very large challenge for them to take care of. But it's sort of, you know, like, okay, wow, that's, wow, he really is special needs. But now we have school choice.
You do.
And so in special education, you know, public school is obvious. Charter schools, we were talking before we were recording, there's a, you know, a dislike, a school for designs to uplift dyslexic students in San Antonio that you'll be visiting. So there's those types of charter schools, private schools. There's different ones. What about school choice? How is this going to play into special education?
Students, well, parents will have the option, of course, of whether or not, first of all, they qualify for an education savings account. And the, the other side of that is, will the private school that they would like to utilize it at, will they accept the education savings account? So you're going to see, you know, the growth of all of those things. I believe that it's also similar to a program that we already have in special education, which is the parent-directed special education services. It's a $1,500 grant, a one-time grant that parents can apply for. It started two legislative sessions ago. It ran out of money very quickly, the first legislative session. The second legislative session, they refunded it. This one, they added more money to it. It is, it is the first of the education savings accounts. However, it was a one-time fund. I believe that the, the funds are going to be able to use, be utilized à la carte in that sense, where parents will be able to access an education saving account fund and utilize it for private therapies for speech, PT and OT. The state of Florida utilizes education savings accounts in a very similar way. They just started it a couple of years ago. So that parents who homeschool their children or parents who have children that attend school that need additional services that are not being provided or are services that cannot be provided, such as feeding, oral motor therapy, can be provided utilizing the education savings accounts.
Yeah. So, you know, special education, it rising to one-fifth of students here in Texas. You know, the State Board of Education, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, supported HB2 and SB 568, which you touched on a little bit earlier in the 89th Texas Legislature. You know, you have so much history in special education. You're, you know, on the State Board of Education. Seems like something that you're pretty passionate about. Thank you. What do you hope to see going forward? Whether it be from the State Board of Education or from the Texas Legislature in the 90th or, you know, the Texas Education Agency? What can Texas do to support special education students more?
Well.
That's a big question.
That is a big question, but let me tell you.
I bet you have a lot of answers.
If I could wave a magic wand and add any more children to special education, I would, I would gather the gifted children as well.
Interesting.
A lot of students, a lot of states have students who are in gifted services are also under the special education umbrella because they require additional services as well. And we have a number of students who are twice exceptional. They may be gifted and dyslexic or gifted and autistic or gifted and learning disabled in one particular area. So gifted is a, is a whole realm of students that are, are not being served at the way they should be served here in the state of Texas. There's a, a cap on how much funding that a school district can receive for providing gifted services. We recently rewrote the gifted, it's handbook or guidance book for school districts. However, by moving it under special education, the gifted students would also then have goals and objectives that they would work on. It'd be very specific. Parents would receive progress monitoring every six or nine weeks. Parents would be able to meet annually and discuss, how are we meeting the needs of our super smart kids as well, right? So we have, so we would cover, you know, So we have, so we would cover, you know, the entire area of, of all, because students who are gifted are also special needs as well.
Yeah. So I guess for people that don't know, I mean, I know what you're talking about because I'm, I live it. But yeah, there are specific written goals, for instance, in my son's case, specific written goals that they're trying to achieve. And we get status updates every so often. And we have an annual meeting, I think it's called, an ARD.
That is correct. Admission, review and dismissal. Good job.
I would not have been able to tell you what ARD stood for, but I know it's called an ARD. I think ours is in month? Anyhow, maybe it's been in January. Totally irrelevant. So so you're saying that for gifted students, obviously it would look different. Like for my son, it might be, you know, I don't know, identifying and, you know, me in a picture and saying dad. But for a gifted student of the same age, it might be, I don't know, what a gifted student. I mean, there's, there's, it runs the game, of course, but just build this robot.
Right. Like it's just.
Code the, you know, make a, make a, a, an app for a phone that's, you know, a simple calculator or something like that.
Exactly. So all of our students, all of our students that require special services and that would be gifted too. So that would be my, my want, my wish, right?
And you're, and you, you're, your, your desire for that is so that gifted students would receive a little bit more attention and it'd be a little bit more measured. Okay.
Measured progress accountability by the school district.
Yeah.
As well as the people providing those services to the students as well as to the parents.
Yeah.
We, we owe the parents that information.
Sure.
And we do it for our special, for our students that are currently in special education, but we don't do that for our students who are.
I have to ask, and, you know, I don't know what that increases the number of, you know, special education, or how big that umbrella gets at that point. I don't know, 25% of students, maybe if you add gifted. I, you know, I could see some parents saying, well, why, my kid's not any of those things, just a regular kid, great kid, whatever. Why doesn't he or she have goals that they're every six weeks, you know, whatever, an annual, I mean, we have parent teacher conferences, but why not do that for everybody?
Sure. That's, so that's, that's what we call general education.
Sure.
And so the, those students, the students who are in general education work on the Texas essential knowledge and skills.
Yeah.
Just like all the other students, however, are children who are on an individual education plan. They work on a scaffolded Texas essential knowledge and skills, right? So you might have a third grade student that's really working at a kindergarten level at this point. And so we're going to work up to that. We're going to keep working toward those grade level Texas essential knowledge and skills. But right now, in order for them to be successful, they may be working multiple grade levels below on a very similar Texas essential knowledge and skills. So you're going to see the same thing for gifted kids, right? So you've got a third grader who's working at a sixth grade level.
Yeah.
So those children also should have specialized goals and progress monitoring. All the rest of the children in general education work on Texas essential knowledge and skills every day on their level.
Yeah.
And the report card every six or nine weeks is, is the accountability to the parents as to how their child is progressing through those Texas essential knowledge and skills.
Okay. So that was one. It sounded like there was another, if you had a magic wand. Number one was adding gifted and talented to the special, special education umbrella. Was there a second one that you, second thing that you were going to say?
Sure. If, if I could ask for legislation, it would be that there be legislation around special education advocates.
Okay.
So I, in my, in my position, work with some pretty phenomenal special education advocates. And parents usually bring them to the table.
Yeah.
And what I find is that it's based on, you know, the parent is, is new to special education. There's a lot to learn, as you know, of a, as a parent.
I roll my eyes in the back of my head because I know there's a lot to learn and I know that there's a lot more that I still have to learn.
Right. And so you hire someone who, who advocates. However, there's no standard for that in the state of Texas. You don't have to have taught special ed. You don't have to have been a director. You don't have to have a degree in it. You don't have to have taken some certification course. Anyone can just say that they're an advocate for special education and charge parents.
I say I'm an advocate for special education, but I don't charge anybody for it. So maybe I'm doing it wrong.
So with that, you know, that's, that's the flip side from the administrative point of view, from the public education administrative point of view is that when, when we have people who come in to the meetings and then take up valuable time.
Yeah.
That, because the school district is teaching the advocate what they need to know. There, there needs to be some training, some requirements in order to, to become an advocate in the state of Texas for special education. And so if I could request legislation, it definitely would be around that area.
And are you envisioning that position? So to be a special education advocate, like a certified special education advocate, whatever, that would be outside of the school district, outside of, you know, you're not, just to make sure I'm understanding, not a position within a school.
No.
Kind of sound, but it would be kind of cool if there was one in the school.
Right.
There's a lot. And just from my own personal experience navigating the, the special services, whatever bureaucracy is challenging. And I know for a fact that I'm sure I missed some paper somewhere and I don't even know, like it's, it's a challenge. So advocates are, you know, they, they do great work. We've had them in the past that through, you know, therapists and stuff like that. And they, they do, they are super helpful.
They are, they are. I just do feel like there needs to be some level of
Yeah.
of educational certification requirement.
Sure.
You know, for them.
I, I guess I'm surprised that, you know, most people, and I guess this is just, you know, we're talking about education. So I just would have guessed that it would have been more funding. And so I appreciate that you had a different answer. Not that I'm sure you would be happy with more funding, but, you know, it's, those are, I think those are really interesting and great answers.
Thank you. You know, everybody likes to have more money. But having been raised, raised by an educator, I know what it's like to function with, with, within what you have.
Yeah.
Like function with, in what you've been given.
Sure.
And do the best that you can with those things. And so we, like I've said before, so we have some superintendents who are just phenomenal, you know, in their own right with our special needs students and how they ensure the funding for their programs.
Yeah. Well, Dr. Audrey Young, I want to be respectful of your time. Is there anything else that you wanted to touch on before we sign off?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for having me here today.
You're welcome anytime. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate you, the work that you do for special, it's special needs children now and in the past. So thank you for that. Is there a website or social media that you wanted to plug?
I have a website. It's S B O E eight dot com.
The number eight?
Number eight. S B O E, the number eight dot com. That is my own website. Also, I want to share with your readers to, or listeners to be sure to, yes, to go to our state board of education website as well. We have our meeting next week. It shows when all of our meetings are posted through, through the year. And there are live links to watch the meetings.
Yeah.
And videos as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you even have one coming up.
We do next week.
Next week. So good luck with that meeting. And we'll put the links for that down in the description below. Dr. Audrey Young, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.